麻烦你請啲出席嘅官員咧
Alright, let's start again. Shall we invite officials and deputations back in please?
系喎，好勁，好犀利啊。閂咗都冇用啊，啲啲風系咁吹出嚟嘅。嗯？ 第二輪啦，睇下先。咁屌啦，系咪啲人嚟睇下先。多咗呢個系咪？鄭。
系啦。
鄭朝女士。
我即刻問問嗰個人點讀啊，short，Jacob short。咁即系可能有兩個讀法咯。入緊噶啦，而家帶緊佢入嚟。系啊，我一陣間問問佢。
石懷軒。又系你講嗰個咯，又講一次。
系啦，又又聽你講。當新人啦，又。
嚇？Short，系，short，short，short。有啲人book咗唔嚟啊嘛，系嘛？
系啊，工作人員系得咁多位嘅啫。
咁，佢話之前打電話你話冇位。
唔系所有位都系俾曬工作人員嘅，我覺得。
講錯。但系無線通講咩事啊？
唔繫好明，我都唔繫好明。
你開始得未啊？啲官員入唔入嚟噶喂？ 官員，爭官員。一陣間要完咗。
主席，誒有個小，都唔繫好少噶。
Manager, I've got a question. There are some members in the gallery who suggested that they come down here because there are so many vacant seats. They are members of the public. Where they are attending as observers, they... Those sitting down here have registered to speak, so they can't come down here.
好，我哋會議。
Alright, let's resume our meeting. The purpose of today's meeting is to hear deputations' views regarding the discontinuation of broadcasting services by DBC. Welcome, please clip on your EAPs. Channel zero is for the floor, number one for Cantonese, number two for English. Just a reminder that other than legal members and designated officials, anybody attending today's meeting will not be protected by the legal powers and privileges ordinance in what they say. We have three sessions with eighty-three deputations. The second session is starting now, we're running a little bit late. We're starting from eleven seventeen to one seventeen P M. And then we're gonna have one hour lunch break. We're inviting the deputations to speak in turn for three minutes only. Please highlight the salient points in your submission, please do not repeat all the points in the submissions. We will be posting the submissions on the web and make them available to members. If you haven't had any submissions or if you'd like to supplement anything, please submit them after the meeting. Please do not use cocktail language because this would make it inconvenient for the simultaneous interpreters. And also do not use offensive and insulting language to officials when you speak. And please keep silent in your seat. I'd like to invite Ms. Jun Hong, or Ms. Jun Hong is not here yet, Mr. Cheung Tak Hong. Madam Chair, members, good morning. I am Cheung Tak Wen. I come here to this public hearing today because I want to launch an appeal, a protest or complaint with Mr. Quek So. I feel that Mr. Quek So is doing something which is in contravention of our Mini-Constitution, the Basic Law. He's giving us the perception that he's acting in cackoats with Peng Cheng Hua and undermining the freedom of expression. I think he is really acting against the freedom of speech. At the very beginning, it was Mr. Bill Wong who controlled freedom of speech. And then Mr. Quek So set idly by. In Hong Kong, without a free environment for business, it would make people lose confidence in making investments in Hong Kong. Now, there is divisive- divisiveness in the organization. And Mr. Quek So caused this a commercial dispute. And I think it would be enough if a certain person is dismissed. That would end the whole thing. I mean, why is it that the whole saga still goes on? So it's not a matter of personality, it's not a matter of hiring a particular person that causes this commercial dispute. They are hiding behind the excuse of hiring a particular person and they are silencing the people of Hong Kong, that's the whole truth. So, Mr. Quek So, are you merely an outsider? I think you have become an insider. By that, I mean, Mr. Quek So is sitting idly by and he's putting his foot... I think he's making the situation worse, and this is something that I don't think can be tolerated. We do enjoy one country, two systems, and Hong Kong people governing Hong Kong. I think you have to take responsibility. Have you ignored your responsibility? You're acting against the Basic Law. Article seventeen of the Basic Law makes it very clear that Hong Kong people enjoy freedom of speech, which is protected by law. Alright, Ms. Mac Li Ming. Good morning, I'm Mac Li Ming, I'm here to complain against Mr. Quek So. At the I T B P, I heard, I heard the... Please speak into the mic. I heard the recording of Mr. Albert Chang. Now, it was said that this is a commercial dispute, the government cannot intervene. Albert Chang caused this an erroneous understanding of the situation. Now, if they're not acting in accordance with the licensing condition, the government should intervene. Why is it that they are not serving the members of the public under the law? Now, this is our request as a member of the audience. Why is it that Mr. Dr. Ko Wing Man was so concerned about the collapse of D R and also the interest of the public? Why is it that Quek So is not showing any concern regarding the collapse of D B C? Now, the members are accusing the liaison office of political interference and undermining freedom of generalism in Hong Kong. Mr. James To said that Hong Kong through the liaison office is interfering with Hong Kong. And Mr. Lam Kwah Hong is saying that the liaison office is interfering with freedom of generalism in Hong Kong. Mr. Albert Chan said that this is political interference, this is political control, and the organization behind this is the liaison office. The D B C issue is not merely a commercial dispute. Mr. Shin Chung Kai said that this is not an internal dispute. There is external forces that threatening this organization. Now, some refuse to inject any capital, some refuse to sell off their shares, they are getting in the way of the operation of the D B C. Even someone who is blind would understand that this is a really political interference addressed up as a commercial dispute. I would like to urge the I T B panel to conduct an investigation into the whole saga. If you do not deal with this properly, it will deal a blow to the reputation of Hong Kong. It will also deal a blow to the implementation of one country to systems. The government should listen to public voices, respect them. Thank you. Alright, next, Mr. Lam K Po. I'm Lam, Madam Chair. I regret that the secretary didn't hear our voices. The secretary's not here? Please carry on. I bought four digital receivers and there was a logo, D B C, there. From the first day, the whole thing erupted, other than Albert Chang and Morris Hall telling us everything about what happened. Mr. Bill Wong didn't see the need to come out and face the audience and the consumer. Now, as a shareholder, as there is a pledge to inject capital, they're injecting any capital. Even if this is a commercial dispute, shouldn't they come out and face the public? Shouldn't they come out in the public domain? We can only find out about the whole thing through the media. Second, the government is promoting D A B, Digital Audio Broadcasting, other than D A, D B C. We have R T H K which does digital broadcasting. But they merely, really broadcasting Radio Four, Radio Five and B B C and the C C T V programs and digitize them. If the government's promoting D A B, now we have D B C that has devoted so much resources. And the government is ignoring the whole thing, just citing commercial disputes. Are they ignoring the interests of the consumer and also the supporters for D B C? There are so many people, so many protesters, and there are honorable members who are against the select committee. Has the secretary listened to our voices? Now, you have paid, contributed so much resources to R T H K, do they have Mark Yun Sao there as a host? Now, with Donald Jung's departure, does it mean that you don't have to look after the interest of the audience? The government talked about minority interest, that the D B C produces programs for the Nepalese or Filipinos. With the departure of D B C, who's going to look after their interests? Third, this audio clip involving the shareholders and Albert Chang. I'm not sure whether this is a genuine clip or not, that shouldn't the legal find out about the truth for the members of the public? If this is a commercial dispute, why did we hear this audio clip? Now, I know that members are busy having meetings, they don't listen to D B C, they don't understand the aspirations of the general public. Now, if you don't investigate into this, then you are part of the attempt to undermine digital audio broadcasting and you're undermining freedom of speech on the airwaves. Ms. Isabel Lo. Madam Chair, I was born in the sixties, I started listening to the radio in the seventies and eighties. I listened to western songs in the seventies, in eighties I listened to Japanese songs. There was a Japanese singer who sang really well. And then we had Anita Moi, Alan Tam, Lo Yip May, Brenda Lo, and they resang some of her songs and they're very popular. If you listen to this Japanese singer and you listen to the original track, it's so pleasant, it's so nice to listen to. By the same token, D B C, from D B C, we can hear the Denise programs. D B C has Taipan, Albert Chang, with Taipan there, we listen to D B C. Now, with the digital receiver, we can listen to commercial radio and R T H K. And I'd like to say this to Mr. So. R T H K has died away, I mean, commercial radio is half-dead. I think in the nineteen eighties, there was a program produced by R T H K and also a program hosted by Mark Yun Sao. With these gone, R T H K is dead, well and truly dead. Now, in commercial radio, I mean, the heyday of commercial radio was the time with The Teacup in a Storm by Albert Chang. I mean, there was nothing much to listen to on commercial radio. The D B C audience are twenty-four seven, they listen to the radio twenty-four seven. I mean, I'm not listening that much, I listen to D B C for about ten hours a day. I mean, it is so popular, a program, it's been around for about a year with seven channels, it started in July this year. With the passage of time, D B C is going to be the most popular radio in Hong Kong. And we have an attachment to D B C. We listen to Truth, Words of Truth, we listen to the Music Channel. We go back down the memory lane about our relationship, our romances, our younger days and so on. I mean, we listen to these jokes and we listen to the talk shows and we listen to Mark Yun Sao. And we're full of hope about life. Honorable members, I'm not sure whether you listen to the D B C, if you subscribe to what I said, then you should actually.
Yun Sao is king. I'm just an ordinary citizen, please speak into the microphone. I have a few questions from Sir Quek So, but he's not here, regrettably. I think, again, you need to speak into the microphone, please. Is that okay now? Yeah, please, you know, sit closer to the microphone. Is the mic on? I'd like to ask the question. The government issued the license to the D B C, now that broadcasting is stopped, shouldn't the government investigate the why broadcasting is suspended? Mrs. So kept saying that it's a case of shareholder dispute, have you really conducted investigation? You've only said that you've been in touch with Mr. Albert Chang, have you been in touch with the other shareholders like Mr. Bill Wong, Mr. Arthur Lee and the others? Has he done that? Mr. Quek So, don't think that you're an official and therefore you can disregard the complaints from the ordinary citizens. Please investigate into the incident. Because your salaries are paid by the taxpayers. You're paid several tens of thousands of dollars every month. You're a public servant, don't think that you are far above us. So you have a duty to investigate why D B C has suspended service rather than simply saying that it's a case of shareholders disputes. Have you really done your investigation? Have you been in touch with the other shareholders? And if so, please tell us which of the other shareholders have you been in touch with. No matter how rich they are, they have to give you a full account because they apply for the D B C license to use the airwaves of Hong Kong which belong to the public. And the shareholders have a duty to be accountable to the general public of Hong Kong rather than like the other shareholders who resort to tactics to, you know, to stop broadcasting by D B C. When I heard that, I understand the D B C's license is granted by the government, so I trusted the government, so I bought a few digital radio receivers, I would turn it on, you know, all day. But after a few months, broadcast is suspended. The government's not going to conduct any investigations, so how can we trust the government? I've been in Hong Kong for decades, I was born here. I always believe and I'm very proud to be a citizen of Hong Kong because we have freedom of speech, we have a legal system. But it is a pity that the administration and all these, you know, ridiculous officials have damaged all that. I think we've lost our reputation and it's really pathetic. D B C may not, may simply be a trivial matter to you, you may not have bothered to listen to its programs. With the suspension of the D B C broadcasting, I'm sorry, time is up, Mr. Jacob Sot.
Members of the panel and people of Hong Kong, I've come here to urge you to support D B C for the sake of digital radio in Hong Kong. I'm from Imagination Technologies, we're a global technology company based in London. We're publicly traded on the FTSE two fifty and our consumer division, Pure Digital, sells more than six hundred thousand digital radios globally to countries where digital radio has been a success. Countries like Australia, where since launching digital radio a couple of years ago, they've sold more than eight hundred thousand digital radios. Countries like the U K, where now the majority of new cars come equipped with a digital radio as standard or as an option. Countries like Denmark, where more than ninety-nine percent of the population has digital radio coverage. And countries like Switzerland, which have a similar population to Hong Kong, seven point five million people. But the government and the broadcasters have created a wealth of new stations. There's thirty-one German broadcasts, twelve French, twelve Italian and fourteen Romanian. So the Swiss people have embraced these new stations and have purchased more than a million digital receivers. So as a result, more than one in three Swiss households has a digital radio. And that's the kind of digital future I can see in Hong Kong. But in each of these countries, the government has supported the broadcasters. They've developed new stations with better audio, better features and ultimately a better listening experience for the people. And all of this has raised the bar for digital radio over traditional F M and as a result, listeners have embraced it. Now, in Hong Kong, without D B C, the digital offering will be inferior to F M. The listeners will have no reason to support digital radio and ultimately it will fail. So I urge you to support D B C for better radio for the people of Hong Kong. Thank you.
Shak Wai Him, having heard Mr. So, I found that he kept repeating himself. I think Mrs. So should learn from the D B C audience. Even when we are talking about the need to resume broadcasting, we have so many different points of views and arguments. D B C could be a very good platform to train political talents. They have different programs where different perspectives are being expressed on the same issue so that we don't, the audience don't have to listen to the same old tune. We are no longer listening to D B C broadcasting and I think that I no longer have entertainment. So I looked up the LCSD, I found out that if I wanted to go to a concert, it's very expensive. I listen to a concert every week, even if I buy the cheapest ticket, I would need to spend close to a thousand dollars a month. But the government doesn't have any plans to launch a universal retirement scheme for the senior citizens without any support from the government. And they're deprived of the right to listen to the radio broadcast. How can they in their twilight years have any entertainment? Do we want these senior citizens to simply live in boredom or sit, you know, in the park all day and eventually become senile? If Mrs. So doesn't want these things to happen, then shouldn't he actively intervene into this D B C saga? Instead of only talking to Mr. Albert Chang and Mr. Morris Hall, instead he should be talking to Mr. Bill Wong because they had the bigger control. Furthermore, the government kept saying that it wants to encourage creative industries. But I don't think the government's taken any concrete steps to do that. The BBC is the biggest creative industry in the D B C programs. There are many programs of Hong Kong characteristics. There's one program which, you know, which tells us about the historical anecdotes of Hong Kong's history and also programs, you know, telling people about the kind of delicacies that we can enjoy on the street and so on. So for the enjoyment of the people of Hong Kong, I hope Mrs. So will consider actively intervening into the D B C incident. I'm a D B C audience, I like the station because it is a radio station that is a provider variety of good programs. With a radio station with so many audiences being stifled and many of the media simply sitting by and acting differently. Some media even accuse Mr. Chang and Mr. So for not managing the station properly. But we all know that there are four major shareholders who are trying to stifle the D B C and refuse to inject capital into radio. Mrs. So, are you deaf? Have you not heard the aspirations of the people of Hong Kong? I hope you'll do your job properly, you know, discharge your duties properly and deal with the D B C incident fairly. If you keep on repeating the same old tune, then I think you should step down. Finally, I would like to urge the legal members to help us fight for the resumption of broadcasting by D B C. I hope you will, you know, learn from your mistakes and really serve the people of Hong Kong. Mr. Khan Chi Chung.
Chair, Madam Chair, starting from two thousand and four, R T H K started digital broadcasting testing, pilot digital broadcasting. But many people in Hong Kong didn't know about it. When D B C appeared on the scene, only then did digital broadcasting, well, digital broadcasting being promoted to the public. Since the soft launch to its proper, you know, broadcasting, they have actively promoted digital broadcasting so that more people in Hong Kong can receive an alternative, you know, choice of broadcasting. D B C's enthusiasm and commitment in digital broadcasting is well known to all. This expanded service is regrettable and I cannot accept what Mr. So earlier said in that this is only a case of dispute among the shareholders and the government doesn't have any role to play. And he uses it as a reason for refusing to actively intervening into the incident which really has an impact on the interests of the general public. For example, when the three TV stations failed to reach an agreement regarding the simulcast of the Olympics Games, eventually Mrs. So and the representatives of the three TV stations met for seven hours and eventually arrived at a consensus. And then in two thousand and ten, when there was a dispute about the shareholdings of ATV, the government actively intervened and monitored the whole incident to ensure that broadcasting would, programs would run as normal. The point here is whether or not the public can receive these programs. Since it involved the public, the government should actively intervene to protect public interest. As the regulator, the government should not blindly enforce the law. To make an analogy, if you have a boss who has, employee who has been absent for a week, but this boss only know how to accuse the employee for being lazy and...
but this boss only know how to accuse the employee for being lazy and only deduct his salaries without trying to find out the reasons for his absence. But now this employee is exactly our government. Compared with the previous cases and the D B C incident, the government is adopting different approaches. So one can't help expecting the government has an ultimate agenda. Furthermore, the D B C, Mr. Albert Chang had complained through the media that some of the shareholders refused to inject capital because they were under pressure from Mr. Si Wai Lung. Also, there was a video clip being reviewed saying that the Chinese and Asian officers are putting pressure on the radio station. Obviously, there are some reasons for the cessation of service. The airwaves belong to the public and I think in any democratic society, freedom of speech is a prerequisite. So we will not accept any step backward in terms of freedom of speech. So I am all in support of the resumption of broadcast by D B C. Mr. So is saying that he cannot intervene into the D B C saga as if he doesn't have any power at all and the public is very disappointed. He's been slow in following up on the incident. Is he trying to, you know, bring about the cessation of service and the closing down of the D B C? So I think Let's Go should set up an investigation committee with powers to investigate into the incident of the D B C being silenced. We should hold the government accountable so that we will be able to resurrect D B C, which is a bad broadcasting on the basis of conscience. I think the government should also step up the development of digital technology. So I think we should investigate into the reasons why D B C has to stop broadcasting. And secondly, when a C A approve, are there loopholes in the procedures for the issues of license? Why can't Mr. So step in to step in? Recently, when there was a dispute between A T V and the other A T V stations regarding the broadcast of the Olympics, the government intervened very quickly, immediately, and the problem was being resolved. So is Mr. So in dereliction of duties this time? And thirdly, it has been rumored that one of the shareholders preferred to buy his private jet rather than injecting money, any further capital into the D B C. He's blatantly violating the commitment he's made as a shareholder of D B C. So is that a conspiracy on his part to cheat the government and lie to the public and also going against, you know, corporate social responsibility? Are these shareholders, should these shareholders be continued to be allowed to be in control of the station? And thirdly, should the C A punish these shareholders and ask them to explain why they suddenly they refuse to inject further capital into the station? And fifthly, those shareholders, we should ask them to dispose of or to sell the shareholdings of D B C to other people who are willing to inject capital and who are eligible or qualified so that broadcasting could be resumed. And sixthly, the shareholders who refuse to buy or sell the shares of D B C is acting selfishly and damaging public interest, but the government has all along refused to intervene. Does the government believe that this is fair and reasonable? Is this what the government is saying when they are advocating the need for national education or is it actually, you know, a negative example of that? Mr. So, I think you should answer the question. Good morning. I've come this morning to strongly urge the government to set up a committee to investigate into the D B C saga. Ever since the incident happened, there had only been written correspondence. So far, only Mr. Morris Ho and Mr. Albert Chang have come forward to give an account of what happened. But our focus is on Mr. Bill Wong, Mr. Arthur Lee, Mr. Wong Chi Yan. These four shareholders are refusing to inject capital. Why is it that these four still have not dared to come forward to explain? I'm a consumer, I bought the radio's receiver, I bet the, bought better headphone, but I've not, you know, stopped listening to any of the D B C programs. I've listened, I've, so it's, you know, it's keeping me company in the course of my work, but that's all gone as a consumer. Because of Mr. Bill Wong and Mr. Arthur Lee who refused to inject further capital, should I complain to the Consumer Council? They're now refusing to inject capital, instead he would prefer to use his money to buy a private jet. That's Mr. Bill Wong. Mr. Arthur, Mr. David Lee, for example, is any problem with the Bank of East Asia? I have a deposit with that bank, I'm really scared. Does it mean that he doesn't have the means or the ability to do that? If that's the case, we will cancel our accounts. At the Bank of East Asia, we have to protect our own interests. And secondly, why is it that they're so worried about the D B C? They are refusing to buy or sell the shares, they refuse to inject further capital, they're hiring a strong team of lawyers and, and we told sixty days, but we listened thirty days, broadcasting has ceased. And today, Mr. So is saying that he would like to censor the expression through on the internet. And why have there been so many people taking to the street in Hong Kong? I think the government should ask itself this question. If the people can have, can make a decent living and their lives, their properties and their freedom are protected and they're under no pressure at all, then there wouldn't be anyone who would come forward or take to the street. I would rather prefer spending my time to plan my next trip or to form a family. I wouldn't even bother to quarrel with you. Since the D B C incident, I'm a person who's never taken part in any rally or spoken in public. Why is it that there are so many of us here today to speak on behalf of and in support of D B C? I think you should really reflect on that. We have all these unskupless and people in power. Mr. Chan Chi White. Madam Chair, if you look, look at me carefully. I've come all the way from the New Territories, I've come a long way here. I saw Mr. So present this morning, I was very happy because I wanted to, you know, you know, say this to him. I think on the seventeenth of October twenty twelve, well, I've been a D B C audience. When I heard something, when I heard about what had happened to D B C, people were all thinking of Mr. Gregory So. So I had a former student who was the victim of the collision of at Lama Island. I attended the funeral of that victim and during that funeral, I found Mr. So and his subordinates paying tribute to the deceased. And I really had a struggle whether or not on that occasion I should express my, to him, my views about the D B C saga and to express to him my concern. But I said to myself that as a teacher, I should do what was right. That would be the best way to teach by example. So what I did was I wrote down some of my requests or aspirations. And what I put, wrote was, Mr. So, I've met you during the funeral, I would like you to urge you to deal with the D B C saga fairly so that the freedom of speech of the people of Hong Kong will not be jeopardized. I walked, I went to, I told Mr. So on that occasion that it's not proper for us to discuss the saga in detail, but please deal with it seriously. So he promised to do that, he took my note and put it into his pocket. And then today I've come here because I want to ask him in person, but to my disappointment, he's now gone. Going forward, if you talk about dealing with the incident fairly, but I don't think the government is even dealing with the issue at all. To make an analogy, he is sitting idly by and watch D B C, you know, you know, you know, struggling and eventually, you know, had to suspend broadcasting. The government should be impartial and should maintain the public's right, defend the public rights to use the airwaves.
Mr. Chan. I want to thank Mr. Gregory So today. I want to remind him that to have health checks. Because I'm not a loyal, I was not a loyal D B C listener. So I want to thank him for letting me be alerted to this. So he's saying that the government will monitor the D B C incident and saying that it's a commercial dispute and will not intervene. But as some have said, during the Olympics broadcast, Mr. Gregory So has often met with the three television broadcast officials and handled that problem. So it shows that he has the power and has a proper role to handle these issues. And some reporters have asked Mr. Gregory So, so in this issue, what role is the government on play? He very clearly says that our role is to increase communication and to defend the citizens' rights and benefits. But in this D B C incident, Mr. Gregory So keep on saying that it's only a commercial dispute and will not handle it. Personally, I think that Mr. Gregory So is a director for societal tragedy. It's like a newlywed couple and they're saying that, and the wife is saying that I can't buy, I can't buy milk because it's too expensive, but then the government official doesn't do anything. And so then the wife has to beg on the streets to find milk money, but no one, but everyone just ignores her. So she goes to the welfare office and then tries to find, to discuss it with the secretary, but the secretary says that he won't care. So what would happen, the young wife with the young baby? So, and then so the baby, like D B C, has been silenced because they are too hungry and there's no money. And then so this young woman will go to the government and say, ask the government for help repeatedly, but there is no response. Finally, this woman also undergoes a hunger strike. She only wants to, she only wants to speak to the secretary, but as a servant of the public, the secretary does not meet with her or even send someone. So finally, this baby finally dies and then the secretary says that there must be a fine. So I want to ask what is going on? Mr. Gregory So is only a public servant. If you want to issue a license and then you say that you have to monitor this, but then you're not doing this now. So finally, is it that should we open airwaves so that citizens can have their rights? If there's one day that T V B is their shareholder dispute and then say that they won't broadcast even for one day, will Mr. So stand idly by? Ms. Janie Kong. As to the D B C incident, I'm, I feel very, I think it's very regrettable. There is no public inquiry. So the station has only been broadcasting for a very short period of time and now it has stopped. I think this is not into interest of the public. Public interest should ride over any commercial interest. So I represent many, many others who feel heartache over this. I want to emphasize that. Mr. Gregory So feels that D B C stopping its broadcast is due to commercial dispute. But when I explain this to family, as for example, to my nine-year-old child, even a small child, and understanding from a common sense point of view, he will feel that it's not logical. How can you think that this incident is a commercial dispute? If shareholders do not buy or sell their shareholdings and will not allow any others to inject capital, even a child thinks that this is not logical. This seems like a form of bullying. It's one side. Only the wishes of one side causes the radio station to collapse. So even a small child will feel that this is irrational and illogical. So if the government will not withstand idly by, this will strip our public interest. So I think that Let's Go should have an open hearing so that D B C and us audience members can have an open answer and not just handle this issue in a very obscured way. One night, I was listening to radio very late, that is, to D B C. When it's about to stop broadcasting, I heard a lot of elderly people call in to the show. And I heard the helplessness and their crying and giving their opinions. I come here today to say that I am representing many listeners who are not here today or even many people who cannot walk to come here today, the elderly audience members. They feel very helpless that they cannot do anything about this. Mr. So Chukhei, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to declare my interest. I'm not a fan of Mr. Albert Chang, so please, the government, do not think that I am being used by him. So I think it's very regrettable that Mr. Gregory So is not here, or I should say this section, and so cannot directly hear our opinions. It makes me think about a murder case many years ago. There are parents and a child and then the parents were fighting and then the mother takes the baby to the welfare bureau, but they don't do anything. So in the end, the father hurts the mother and the child. So I think Mr. Gregory So is like the welfare bureau in that instance, is that after he has understood the situation, he hasn't done anything, he forgets that some of the shareholders, is that these shareholders are people that he sees very often. And then he doesn't ask the shareholders what's going on or to intervene, to ask the older shareholders, along with Mr. Albert Chang or Mr. Morris Ho or even Mr. Ron or Cooley, to sit down and discuss the issue. I think that is a big problem. So when there are disputes within the A T V's personnel, the communications authority will intervene. So isn't that a commercial dispute? Also, in terms of the Olympics broadcast, so even though one channel has bid for So broadcast, Mr. Gregory So has intervened and caused other stations to be able to broadcast this. So is this a double standard by Mr. Gregory So? I don't want to say it's schizophrenic, but I think that is an apt term to say that Mr. Gregory So has multiple personalities. So he intervenes with A T V with the Olympic dispute, but not in this particular incident to truly understand what is going on in the shareholders dispute. I think that is a mistake. Mr. Gregory So, I think, was a district councillor for Wang Tai Sin. So he has an experience in this area. So why is it that he does not help mediate these shareholders' problems? I hope that Mr. Albert Chang and Mr. Morris Ho can answer. Is it that do you support to hire some temporary workers with day wages so to broadcast can continue? And is that, was that refused by the other side? Thank you. Ms. Lee Pickron, I want to say first is that I was born in the sixties and I was born and raised in Hong Kong. So I've seen in Hong Kong during the colonial times, we had a lot of difficulties, but we had opportunities as well. So after nineteen eighty-seven, we faced many obstacles as well. Very luckily, Hong Kong's high spirit can accept many different opinions and a lot of different things. can accept many different opinions and a lot of different things. We're also so tolerant and we are wel, welcome reform. And these things have not been destroyed. So I've been very proud to be a Chinese person living in Hong Kong. So we not only have the traditional, uh, traditional moralities of Chinese, of a Chinese person, we also have the unique, unique Hong Kong characteristics. So I'm wondering, why is it that the government has not actively monitored that, so to ensure the operation of DBC in an op, in a normal way? The government says they're launching the digital broadcast, but what have they done? Furthermore, Mr. Greg So is the secretary and he has his own responsibilities. The previous administration would say that you have, you should do your job. So how has Mr. Greg So done this? He's always quoting other people's opinions. He is a lawyer. Hearsay is something that you heard, but you must corroborate this. So what has he done to corroborate what he has heard? And integrate it into making his own opinion? The responsibility of a secretary is something, is something that us citizens has given him. He also has his powers. In terms of issuing license for television, he would mediate in terms of an Olympics broadcast incident. He also handled that issue. He is only selectively, he only working selectively. So is it that us citizens should only issue him salary selectively? Please be quiet. Are you done? Thank you. Mr. Li Chuck Fun? Of, because as an employee who was working at DBC, I'm now out of work because of DBC incident. So now I'm, it's very maddening that Mr. Greg So is not here in this second section. He's saying that he doesn't care about citizens' opinions. I know that these open hearings are completely useless. So I see that not only officials are not here and there are only seven Legco members here. There are only seventy Legco members and only one-tenth of the members will attend this deposition. This proves that even Legco don't care about citizens. They don't care that DBC is about the freedom of speech. Mr. Greg So has always said that it's a commercial dispute and saying that it's a shareholders dispute to showcase responsibility. But I suspect, but Mr. Bill Wong is a DB, DAB member and Mr. Greg So is also a DAB member, so they have political connections. Another one is Arthur Lee, which is, who is a ex-CO member. So I think that he is acting on the orders of the CE today. And I think the, the most important thing here is to leave a historical record here. So saying that Leng Chan Ying's is, administration is completely bank, morally bankrupt. So we cannot do anything about this. I think that we must act. So some have already acted and to create a, a league to protect Hong Kong's freedom. So we will have forums and promote and will want all the Hong Kong citizens, so in the next quarter, to pay ten dollars less in terms of tax as a protest. So please be quiet. Because Mr. Greg So has completely not acted for, and according to his post, I think the entire digital broadcast policy is about a particular product and can ca, and create a new industry in Hong Kong. But right now, us DBC employees have lost their jobs and so all the digital audio receivers, who, people who bought them will be affected. So strictly speaking, Mr. Greg So do not have the quality to be the secretary. Not because, if not because of this Rita Lao's personal reasons, he would not be sitting here today. So he does not have the proper ability or intelligence to do this. So I want everyone to support our, our activity so that everyone will pay ten dollars less in tax in the second quarter as a protest to Mr. Greg So. Mr. Benson Wong, thank you. I'm a little bit disappointed to see that Mr. Greg So is not here. I think Mr. Greg So has received, following his six figures, I think he should come here on a Saturday to listen to the opinions of us small citizens. But I don't know why he's not here in the second section. Is it because he can't handle our very sharp criticisms? I was, I participated in the DBC's incident as well and I discovered something. Before, in the public forum, that we had some meetings. So I'm very, I feel very curious is that why the government does not care about our activities? Is it like, is that these government officials, they all pass through the activity every single day and their citizens are criticizing these government officials, saying that you're not being competent. So how can you just pretend nothing has happened and go to work? I think there's, I don't know if it's because they just want to like pretend that they don't see anything. Furthermore, for several times, I have seen that some establishment members will have a smirk on their face when they pass by the, uh, us assembly. So as a teacher, if I see a student like this, and twenty years ago, I would slap him, but of course I can't do that anymore. But I want to say is that because this incident has been called a commercial dispute or some people may think that, oh, it's only about a commercial, a company that is collapsing and so it's not a big deal. But I think in the, from the very start, Mr. Greg So or the government has incorrectly evaluated the effects on the public society. So if they had not done this, then we'd not have this meeting right now. Furthermore, citizens' concerns are very clear. Of course, we cannot just say that because there are a lot of people attending the public forum or our protests outside the government headquarters and say that. But I don't know if it's because, but in the internet, this incident is a very, is a very big movement, just like the national education. Of course, we see now, right now, someone from this CPU has said that they will monitor the internet. We can see that the whole incident has caused the government to cause a monitoring of speech, especially on the internet. But even, this incident has not ended even after today. Ms. Wong Hang Ling? Hello, audience members. DBC is something that has great programming and a lot of people have high praise for it. A lot of staff members, even though they will take a salary cut, they continue broadcasting. So now, uh, this, this stopping of broadcast has been termed a commercial dispute. But a lot of different audience members have bought a lot of commercials on the channel just so the channel can continue running. And a few days before the stopping broadcasting, a lot of citizens come to a progress gathering in the government. I saw a lot of elderly people. Some of them are blind, some of them are in wheelchairs, some of them are holding canes. Why are they there? They want to support DBC, to continue broadcasting and want to support the staff members. At that time, during, a lot of secretaries, whether Mr. So or others, they did not come down to understand the issue. What is, to understand what's going on.
Well, at the Civic Square, we saw so many senior citizens coming all the way from afar. They have, um, catch, um, buzzes a couple of times and came here in support of, um, the, the DBC. They sat there and they, I mean, they could have stayed at home and listened to, um, the DBC broadcast, had it not been for the cessation. The many people said that, um, this is, um, the, uh, the, um, crackdown of, um, the liaison office. If this is not the case, why don't they come out and clarify the matter? Has anything been done? Every time, uh, the government comes out and, and talks to the media, they merely said that, um, this is a commercial dispute and it's not for them to interfere with, um, these kind of affairs. So I think that they are acting selectively. We come here and we hope that you will face up to, to this easy squarely by, um, setting up a select committee or you might wish to invite all the shareholders and do something for the underprivileged. We have bought these, um, digital receivers and they, they are lying in waste. I hope that this creative industry will not be silenced forever. Mr. Leng Wing Cheung?
Well, as above, so below, Mr. Greg So hasn't surfaced and hasn't come here to listen to our views. Uh, no wonder so many people are criticizing, um, Mr. Greg So. I am a listener to the DBC. I feel regretful about what happened. Now, the easy, the license was issued by the government. There may be commercial disputes between the shareholders. Uh, there may be other disputes. Now, this is, as long as, um, the public interests are, are at stake, um, the government has the obligation to intervene. Why is it that, um, the government intervened, um, in ATV, but not, um, the DBC affair? And we saw the demise of DBC as a result. Now, we heard, um, the audio recording of Mr. Bill Wong and why is it that Mr. Greg So is sitting idly by? And also on July the eighteenth, in Apple Daily, there was, um, rumor that Mrs. Fanny Law said that, uh, DBC should not be allowed to, um, to grow. And because, um, the liaison office has been very resentful, is, um, Mr. Bill Wong saying anything on behalf of the liaison office? Um, should the liaison office be allowed to interfere with, um, the DBC? If, um, the liaison office or Mrs. Fanny Law have been wronged, why don't the pro-establishment councillors, um, set up the select committee and clear their names? Also, since, um, October the twenty-first, the CA's, um, websites has, um, deleted all the complaints against, um, the DBC. Also, the shareholders refuse to offload, um, their shareholdings and the Lloyd is, um, acting as an interim receiver and the government doesn't do anything at all. How much longer do you want to delay the matter? I hope that honorable members will support the idea of setting up a select committee to investigate into the DBC saga. And with, um, this select committee, the shareholders will be able to, um, explain the whole thing with, um, under protection. And Mr. So, you should act as a mediator and resolve, help them resolve all the, um, disputes. And is, um, the fact that, um, the liaison office interfering with Hong Kong, um, go, going against the basic law and one country, two systems?
Ms. Zie Kau Law? Madam Chair, I've got two questions regarding the DBC affair. First of all, now we use our handset and we have to sign a contract with the service provider for maybe one year. If I discontinue after one year, I still have to pay for the rest of, um, the contract period because there is a pledge that I've entered into. The DBC has pledged, uh, to provide broadcasting service and has injected capital. The government, through the Executive Council, vetted, um, the shareholders and also the, the company to make sure that they have the expertise and the funding to get on with the business. Now, with all these efforts, uh, done by the government, why does the government let, let them off the hook so easily? Would it be like, um, the telephone service provider? Now, should they, uh, this is a twelve-year contract, should they have to leave six hundred million dollars before they're allowed to go? The other example is that in two thousand and seven, we had the financial tsunami. AIA, uh, lost a lot of money and President Obama was, um, aware that, um, there were a lot of dividends, um, uh, being paid to the directors. And Mr. President Obama said that he would take all administrative measures to make sure that this shameful, uh, um, dividend, a payment of dividend will not happen. Now, with, um, the Hong Kong government under the Broadcasting Author, uh, Broadcasting Order, Section Ten, um, basically it says that the government has the power to consider granting a license or not, or take some decision in accordance with the license. It doesn't mean that the government can actually intervene and do something about the situation. The government said that it doesn't have, um, the power to intervene, like President Obama, he doesn't have, um, the, the power and he's doing something for his own people. Now, why is it that, um, we've allowed the situation to come this far and we're all sitting here, launching, uh, launching a protest? Can this question be answered? All right, Ms. Grace Lam? Madam Chair? I've got a complaint to lodge. The government has advertised, um, the development of digital audio broadcasting. I've also bought, um, some receivers myself. None of them can receive DBC. I, I must complain against, um, Mr. Greg So for being unable to be a competent secretary. I hope that he would investigate thoroughly this whole affair for the benefit of the people of Hong Kong. I listen to the DBC every single morning and I hope that he would do something for the benefit of, um, the, the people of Hong Kong and restore DBC. Madam Cheng, Cheng We Chu? A moment ago, Mr. Greg So said that, um, the demise of DBC was attributed to a commercial dispute. Now, they, they're not, um, selling their shareholdings and they, they don't attend the shareholders' meetings and they don't really, um, sign the check for the employees. And they are, uh, engaging in litigation and they are, uh, killing off, um, the DBC and they're persecuting Morris Ho and Albert Chang. And is this something a business person would do? I mean, is this something Arthur Lee, David Lee or, uh, Bill Wong should do? Is this really a commercial dispute between the shareholders? If Greg So feels that this is a commercial dispute, and I think this is only sophistry, sophistry. This is, uh, a kind of rhetoric to cover up their attempt to silence DBC. DBC has a lot of talents with so many good programs, which are of high quality, and they, they are telling the truth. And DBC is popular with so many people from all strata of the community and has a quite a following of tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands. Why don't they inject capital as, um, planned? I think, um, without sufficient capital, DBC faced, um, the specter of a demise. And the, all the employees, led by Taipan, Albert Chang, um, tried to rescue, um, the DBC and they, they have, um, raised funding and they, um, the members of the public are sustaining the, the operation of the DBC. And people, um, are supporting financially, the, the litigation.
And we have lots of moving stories. There was a cancer sufferer who donated ten percent of his salary for the D B C. And there was a senior citizen who has a life saving of a few thousand dollars. He donated quite a bit of money. There was a student who had only three hundred dollars when he put the money into the donation box. I asked him whether he should save up something for himself. And he said that this is the lisy money that he had. There are so many moving stories. In the interest of time, I try to cut my long story short. All right, administration. Would you like to make a response? Please, Mr. Wong, Deputy Secretary. Well, the secretary is not here. Order please. The secretary has responded to a lot of the points, but by way of information. There was a mention of promotion and although lack of it on the part of the government. In fact, together with the three other licensed broadcasters, the D B C and R T H K, we do maintain liaison to carry out a promotion. We spend close to four million dollars over the past couple of months promoting digital audio broadcasting in Hong Kong. And we're not merely putting up posters as some promotion effort. We also mount publicity on the web to make sure that the members of the public would be exposed to this kind of information. Now, there was a mention of the London Olympics. The secretary already explained how this is different from this affair. Also, in relation to the complaints, if members of the public have any complaints against the licensed broadcasters, you're welcome to do so. The Communication Authority does receive complaints. I think that's all I have to say by way of a response. Mr. Albert Cheng, Mr. Boris Hall, there were questions directed at you. Would you be prepared to respond or care to respond? All right, we might come back to you. Madam Chair. Well, whatever questions, I'm prepared to answer them. All right, and there are four members. Or two more. Mr. Cheng, by way of clarification, Madam Chair, to be fair to Mr. Ronnie Tong. Mr. Tong is not here today and during the first session, the secretary quoted Mr. Ronnie Tong as my counsel. And he said that this is media commercial dispute. This is misleading and this is wholly wrong. Mr. Ronnie Tong made the remarks as legal member here. I didn't fund his presence here. And he said that if this is a commercial dispute, that he's been involved with commercial dispute as a barrister for so many years, then it would be rather unusual. And this is something I'd like to correct. And I hope that members will respect Mr. Ronnie Tong. He's not here. I don't think we should quote him too much. Ms. Claudia Mill, Madam Chair. I must express regret over Mr. Greg So. He's he's gone now. He's done a runner and now he's taking so much pay. And he keeps saying that this is a commercial dispute. He keeps saying that this is a commercial dispute and it's not for the administration to interfere. Now, he doesn't have really a strong argument and he's framing Ronnie Tong. And this is wholly irresponsible. I must express my utter regret over that. Order please. I must reiterate, I'm not sure whether it was Long Hare or Mr. Albert Chen who said this. We should invite Justice Andrew Lee to set up a commissioner inquiry. If it comes out that there was political interference, then Mr. Greg So should step down forthwith. What I was going to say a moment ago, Mr. Greg So twice, on two occasions framed Mr. Ronnie Tong. Now, Mr. Tong is not here with us. I think he was actually framing Ronnie Tong behind his back. And this is really a shameful act. Now, I'd like to ask Mr. Albert Cheng, I was going to ask Albert Cheng to confirm that. I'm grateful that Mr. Cheng has already clarified that. I don't want to waste any more time. Ms. Emily Lau. Right, thank you so much for coming here and expressing your views. As members, as you all know, there are some honourable members would like to help the D B C come back on air. We'd like to carry our investigation, but there are so many members who raise objection. We are going to have a debate to be carried out as to whether we should appoint a select committee. Unless many members change their position, we will not be able to see the prospect of a select committee being formed. I'm glad that members appreciated so many programs. I wonder why other broadcasters are not so pluralistic. And we are very concerned about the future of one country, two systems. The secretary is not here. I don't think he'll be coming back enough to do it at all. And this is making us very, very angry. And I hope that the officials here will relay what we have to say. Now, if I may put a question to Taipan. Now, he said a moment ago that if possible, they would like to resume broadcasting service. Now, Mr. Taipan, can you tell us, or Mr. Hall for that matter, under what circumstances would you bring the D B C back on air? Now, we keep urging the resumption of service of D B C. Under what circumstances the Letgo or the executive authority can do to help? Mr. Cheng and Mr. Hall care to respond?
Madam Chair, thank you. As matter of fact, the D B C is under receivership at the present moment. As part of the management, we cannot interfere with operation of the company. We did write to the chairman of the Communication Authority, Mr. Hall. Now, but we were told that because it is under receivership, there will not be any meeting being set up. Now, citing the reason that the D B C is under receivership. In fact, a couple of days ago, through the receiver, we put together a a proposal for the receiver. Mr. Hall and Mr. Cully are willing and able financially and management-wise to bring the D B C back on air. We need all the one week's time. In one week's time, we can reactivate seven channels. And channel one, the talk show channel, and two music channels, we can bring them back on air immediately. And then in two fortnight's time, i.e. a total of five weeks, under the licensing condition, we can reactivate the D B C in full. We are still awaiting the Communication Authority's response. But the most important thing is the shareholders' disputes. Now, as I said, the three shareholders, myself, Boris Hall and Mr. Cully, we have about forty-five percent of the shareholdings. That doesn't really resolve the controlling shares. And I mean, in the absence of the controlling shares, we cannot bring the D B C back on air. A couple of months ago, we started meeting the officials and the secretary. Now, it's not a question of intervening. We hope that under the licensing conditions, he should meet the shareholders. He admitted these shareholders' disputes. Why can't he sit all the shareholders down and for the administration to understand what really goes on, why discontinuation of the service?
Madam Chair. I hope that the administration should try to step in. Not really stepping in, but I think you should talk to all the parties concerned. If those shareholders have the means and the ability and if they could have a discussion and if it works out, then they can resolve the dispute and then Mr. Albert Chen can resume broadcasting. I think that is the least that the administration should do. I'm sure the officials present here will not be able to make a response. Would you be able to respond?
I've heard Ms. Lau's suggestion. Mr. Mo Klaikong, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank all the deputies for coming here this morning. And first of all, I've heard Albert Cheng saying, telling us how broadcasting could be resumed. When the secretary was here, he said that, also said he really wanted seven channels to resume broadcasts. So I hope the bureau could tell us this, that is. Since Albert Cheng could, already has a proposal for resumption of broadcast, I don't think the bureau should depend on written correspondence. Well, the secretary is gone and I hope the administration can answer this question. You say that you can intervene if there's a dispute among all different organizations, but you cannot intervene if it's only a dispute among shareholders. What is the legal basis for that? And secondly, comparing the four, three or four digital broadcasters in terms of the investments and the resources and so on, could you give us a paper highlighting those details? Regarding disputes among different organizations and internal dispute within a particular organization, whether or not the government should intervene, I believe is not a legal issue, but rather is a question which has to do with a policy and position. I think the secretary has already stated his position and I have nothing further to add. Regarding the financial strength and the investments of the different radio stations, I understand that as far as the D B C is concerned, the investment for the six-year period should be six hundred million. The other broadcasters, one of which is Metro, they should be, if I remember correctly, the investment is about two hundred million. Phoenix U has also invested close to two hundred million. As for the two commercial broadcasters making and FM broadcasting chairman, I don't expect that they can give me comparison now immediately. But I hope that you give us a background paper comparing what the different radio stations have done and if possible, the rating figures as well. I also follow up on what the deputy secretary said, although you said you may not be able to answer on behalf of the secretary. You said that it's a question of your policy and position and it's not a question, it's not a legal issue. I think this is really serious. A policy and a position without legal basis, then where do those positions or policies come from? Is it because the secretary is a political appointee, therefore he's expressing a political position? I believe this is a question which the deputy secretary cannot answer. But I think the secretary would need to give an answer himself. I also like to briefly mention the two broadcasters. For the commercial radio, they're going to expect eight hundred million. And for the next six years, for Metro is six hundred. Mr. Chen Chi Kuen. As a member of the I T B panel, I think we should tell the deputies that Mrs. So did not just, you know, you know, leave all of a sudden. According to the attendance list, he has, he already has indicated he would not be attending. And for the afternoon session, he will also be not be in attendance, instead will be attended by Miss Hall. So I think Mr. So is not really respecting the deputies' presence. If he's not able to attend two or three of the sessions, he should allow, you know, an attentive choice because many people have come because of Mr. So. At this time, we're talking about the expansion of broadcasts on the part of the D B C. We would like to ask the administration whether or not they believe, they think it is a question, this is an issue relating to, you know, business dispute and so on. He was, you know, only quoting Ronnie Tong's word and say that it's a business, a commercial dispute. He's not really stated the position of the bureau. I think it's good that he's not here. I would like to know whether the permanent secretary will be more more genuine rather than speaking like a tape recorder. So what exactly is the nature of the incident? Is it a business dispute? Is it all, what? Why are you saying that there is no political interference? And furthermore, you're refusing to investigate as to whether or not there has been political interference. You're not even making, putting on pretense. You're refusing to do anything. What is the reason for that? The bureau could perhaps respond. Talking about the fate of D B C, which we are all very concerned. Albert Cheng said that they could resume broadcast within a very short time. What is the worst-case scenario? Is there a timetable? Would the license be, you know, retrieved and what? Mr. Wong. Members refer to the dispute among shareholders or the commercial dispute. The position of the bureau is that this is a dispute among the shareholders. The source of the dispute apparently has to do with funding by the shareholders, some of whom were not willing to make that contribution. This is our opinion. On the subject of political interference, the secretary, in his previous responses already stated his position and he would not comment on the position stated by a person who was in that video recording. But everyone is entitled to freedom of speech and adopt his own position. As for the fate of D B C, I think we have to act according to the relevant regulations and the licensing conditions. So there are several scenarios where there might have been a breach of the regulations which are being investigated by the C A. And I think one of the outcome was that the D B C was being fined eighty thousand dollars. There are other breaches which are still being investigated and D B C has sixty days to they're now applying to the C A to deviate from the undertaking pursuant to the licensing conditions and that is being considered. As far as the licensing conditions are concerned, if the organization in the end cannot satisfy the licensing requirements, then its eventual fate would be that its license will be suspended. There could be, of course, other penalties. For example, the C A could impose a fine or suspend the license temporarily. As for timetable, I can't give you a timetable now because whether it's Mr. Cheng or Mr. Hall, they both pointed out that they have put forward some proposals and the receiver has now taken over. Apparently, they are engaged in some communication and the C A is still conducting investigation and therefore it's not appropriate for us to speculate as to when or as what the eventual outcome will be. I think thinking at the moment is that the shareholders could adopt a pragmatic attitude to resolve their disputes. Mr. Albert Chen, would you like to respond? Perhaps I will ask Mr. Hall to explain that our license, is there a good chance a license could be revoked by the C E at any time? Given the shortage of funds, our creditors and suppliers are now issuing solitudes letters and asking us to pay the amount outstanding. Some suppliers are now asking D B C to pay its debts, otherwise failure of which will end up in liquidation. Some suppliers are now asking DBC to pay its debts, otherwise failure of which will end up in liquidation. According to the licensing conditions, once a company is being liquidated, the government can immediately take back the license and this can happen at any time. The government can take back the license at any time. Mr. Sin Chung Kai.
Madam Chair, I think the, this, I think it has been proven that the accountability system is a total failure because the responsible official is not here to listen to the views of the public. I think we need to be fair to the two civil servants who are present this morning. They have to, I think the duty to withstand political influence should be the job for Mr. So and not the civil servants, but Mr. So is protecting those involved in political interference. The liaison office is doing the political interference and Mr. So is protecting them in doing so. Whereas civil servants should be politically neutral. Mrs. So is politically accountable. He should be here to listen to the views of the deputations and to answer questions. My question is for Albert Chang. I really want the public to know this. You hold 45% of the shareholdings. You told us that there are two groups of shareholders. One group holds 45%, the minority shareholders. You're not able to have, to, 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 to to, to, to control the decision of the board. And the other 55% refuse to inject capital or dispose of the shareholding and they've also reneged on their commitment to the, to the CA when they apply for the license. Could you, more specifically, tell us? That is, how they have not fulfilled some of the original commitments they made? If the shareholders refuse to inject more capital, they see no, if they see no prospect in DBC, would the other shareholders allow to go, to, 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 to have a, you know, right subscription so that those who are unwilling to do so may choose not to do that, but others, shareholders are willing can subscribe to the right so that you'll be able to continue with your operation? Have you done that? I don't know whether it's convenient for you to, 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 to tell us and if possible, could you tell us what I understand, because this is rather unusual. If I contribute some money, I refuse to make further contribution, but I'm stopping other people from making contributions. Has that happened?
Certainly. I'd like to reiterate once again today because I'm subject to a court injunction. I'm not able to disclose internal information of DBC. I'll ask Mr. Ho to speak first, after which I can comment. In that case, I'll put my question to Mr. Morris Ho. Mr. Morris Ho. For a commercial or business decision, I think all the, I, I think we've put on the table all the possible solutions for the shareholders to consider, including the, the option of bringing in new investors, which were immediately rejected by the, by the board. As for individual shareholders making further contributions, as a result of which, the, the, the shareholding of the other shareholders will be diluted. We have put forward this proposal and there was strong objection from some shareholders because they did not want their shareholders to be diluted. Other than the shareholder who refused to buy or share, share, the shares of the company, all the other options have been considered. Mr. Lam Ko Hong. Madam Chair, I don't have anything further to say to Mr. So. I ask him whether or not he, he really is, you know, you know, doing justice to written. Instead, I would like to say this to our old colleague, Mr. David Lee. Having heard all the deputations and you're a banker, you sue in the United States and you're able to spend millions of US dollars to settle. We are now talking about a difference of 5% of the share, shareholding. David Lee alone, if he were willing, that we would already be able to resolve the problem. He is a man with a high social status. Arthur Lee had once been a policy secretary. He should have the commitment. You go and apply for a license to opt, to, to do something which originally should have been good for the people of Hong Kong, that is bringing in digital broadcasting. But the two brothers now are being held hostage and I, I really think that this is bad news for the Bank of East Asia. I really have lost my trust in this bank. So I mean, what happened if somebody were to buy into the shares of the bank? Doesn't mean that the bank would close down. Now, if this is indeed a commercial dispute, it could be very easily resolved. You could dilute their shareholdings or he can exchange the shareholding for cash. The two civil servants present described this not as a commercial dispute, but the incident, you know, concerning the, the expansion of the broadcast by DBC. So what Mr. Greg So is saying today is totally irresponsible. I've never heard a policy secretary who would have to quote the words of a lawyer in his defense. This is totally unbecoming of the attitude of a policy secretary. So I say this again. If Mr. Greg So or the administration is not, doesn't have the, the, the ability to investigate into this incident, then why don't you ask Mr. Andrew Lee to take charge of the investigation? That would be the best solution. If you ask Mr. Andrew Lee to conduct the investigation, there's a possibility that the license will not be revoked because it has already been confirmed that this is something that needs to be investigated. The crucial point, like Mr. Ho said, is that once the creditors, you know, you know, chase the company for, you know, you know, you know, money, the old or payments, that would be the end. So I think Greg So should immediately do something. It's not a question of intervention. The secretary should protect the right, the right to know on the part of Hong Kong and the freedom of the media operator rather than, you know, you know, saying that, you know, those who make the, the, the investment has the, has the, you know, biggest say. The first person I'd like to appeal to is Mr. David Lee. I think he should do something. Otherwise, it's, it's bad on the image of the bank. He may as well react in this manner, then, then obviously the Bank of Asia will, 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 eventually will have to, have to wind up. Same for Arthur Lee. I'm not going to talk about Bi Wong. Ms. Lam Ko Hong, I think your time is up. Ms. Lau.
Thank you. Mr. Ho says that the creditors are after him and they made a liquidation and then after revocation of a license, if the license is revoked, so you can reissue the license, isn't that right? So the policy of issuing a license is to hope that someone will run such stations. Can you tell us why? What if a license has been revoked? Afterwards, what is the procedure for reissuing of license? What if someone wants to apply for an issuing of license? How, what is the timetable for that? Mr. Wong. What Mr. Ho said is right. It is possible. So regardless whether they liquidate because of the creditors or because they voluntarily apply for that, that is possible. For what happens to the spectrum from DBC? I want to say that. I don't want to speculate on this because we hope that the shareholders can solve their disputes and continue the broadcast of DBC. This is what we want to see. Of course, if some of the channels are opened up, so what will happen? So we will not rule out a, we'll find a new operator. So there are a lot of possibilities. So at this stage, so we have not reached that stage to consider this yet. Madam Chair, I'm saying that if you are, do truly do want there to be continuation of broadcast, then you should do something about it, but you are not. So it's not just a, so the whole Bureau is very, is saying a lot of empty words. So you're saying that you can intervene among organizations, but you cannot intervene if it's among shareholders? I don't know why that is. So let's say you're not doing anything and then the license is revoked. But you're saying that you hope someone can do broadcast. You can very easily reissue a license, but you're saying that you won't consider this. Do you know that society, that a lot of citizens are very concerned? They want it to be rebroadcast. If that's really not happening, then you can reissue a license. So then someone else can, can broadcast. Can this happen very quickly? And Mr. Wong. At this stage, we don't want to say that it seems that DBC has, is hopeless and cannot be revived. Don't want, that's why we don't want to say too much about this issue. But as, but Madam Lau is right. Of course, the, if the operator does not use the current airwaves for that channel, we can ask someone else to do it. They issue a license currently. There's no set timetable for that or like... So, Madam Chair, you said that it's can be done very easily. So for example, Mr. Arkuli, Mr. Ho or Mr. Chang, they can very easily get a new license to broadcast again. Is that something that can happen, of course, if the channel is no longer being in use? So we, the other people, other people do apply to broadcast again. I can't say how long the procedure would take, but it must follow the proper procedures. In the previous meet, the last time when we issued a license, it took, depending on when you start, it took around a year. Mr. Albert Chang has answered. Thank you, Madam Chair. First I want to say is I want to thank the two secretaries, two, the deputy secretaries as well as the principal assistant secretaries here. So over the past year, they are really concerned about the development of DBC. I think that I should speak up in their defense here. There is a danger here because Mr. Morris Ho had said something. So I can't talk about it now. It does not infringe against my injunction. So if, whether the liquidator or, I don't know, not liquidator yet, the receiver, I should say. What we are, is that, that the plan that we submitted is under review, but if DBC has still, is under the current situation and the shareholders do not sell or buy shares and there's not enough capital in DBC because there are so many creditors. And also, as I know, as I, as I hear from the receivers, is that there are a lot of creditors that are after us. In fact, there are some of them applying liquidation. And some have said that according to the licensing condition, if DBC is liquidated, no matter if it's an automatic liquidation or is it because of application by the creditors, the CE has the power to immediately revoke the license. And of course, then seven channels will open up. Then it will depend on the government's policy. Last, when we were applying for a license, we used around two years to apply for an AM channel. But there were some obstacles. So because we held AM license at that time, we could apply for digital broadcast. So applying, applying to previous policy, it seems that the government will only apply for, will only invite applications from those who have licenses. So if you do, if you're not a commercial, if you're not a commercial radio, Phoenix U, et cetera, you do not have, you do not meet the condition to apply for a license. Thank you. Mr. Charles Mach. I want to advise the creditors not to go after DBC because if it does cause DBC to, if it causes the revocation of license or to toss a ball to the CE, I think the creditors have harmed the CE. If they support CE, they should not do this. Otherwise, we'll see that the CE in council can very easily revoke the license, but it will take a long time to issue the license. If that is the case, I don't think that they won't, they will never reissue the license to Mr. Albert Chang. I would like to ask the deputy secretary, like, that is, you don't, it's like, to give some written answers to the panel as to the current stations as opposed to manpower, how much the investments, the program, programming hours and this ratings so that citizens can see that the comparison with DBC and the other radio stations in terms of the impact on the citizens or the enthusiasm. This does not be answered here. This can be done later. Thank you. Yes, we can give this information to the panel later on about this channel's investments, the variety of programming, et cetera. Also, I want to point out that the last time when three licenses were issued in March of 2011, that is digital licenses, one of them was not previously held a license before. So it's not that you have to have a license before you can apply for a digital license. Any other questions from members? Three or four other deposition speakers want to say. Everyone should have one minute. Would that be okay? Mr. Lam Kepo. I would like to ask deputy secretary. You said in terms of promoting a DBC, it took tens of millions of dollars. I would like to ask, besides advertising on TV and radio, I don't see any other promotions, especially RTHK had a roadshow to sell DAB broadcasts, but they only took some, only use some expensive receivers and called that as promotion. Is, so I'm not very clear about that. I want to remind that it's one minute. Actually, you don't have time to ask members. Yes, I am, but I am saying an opinion. I'm just, this is in response to what deputy secretary had said. Okay, yes, so that is very common and not a question. And next, please. I'm very curious. It's very strange that we're trying to help DBC to continue broadcast. We're not, we don't want to hear about why you want to, why we cannot listen to commercial radio or other channels. You think you've got it wrong. We only want to hear DBC. If Mr. Greg So, I want to ask Mr. Greg So not to talk about commercial dispute again. I want to hear him something, say something else. I, I want him to resign if he does say something, just repeat his words. Mr. Socha Hey. Hello? Yes. Please be quiet. This communications authorities in handling this issue. You see that CA often just understands some things, but then never takes any action and then just... but then never takes any action and then just take a fine. Now the receivers, they don't even broadcast anything. So should the CA find them again? The question now is that it's not a DBC problem. It's a receivers' problem. So they should, they should find the receivers and not the company. Because now, Mr. Albert Chang and Mr. Morris Ho or even Mr. Orkuli is not involved with the company. So the people who are behind the receivers, such as the shareholders, should be responsible. So the DBC right now is a zombie company. Mr. John Tang Wing. Hello? We've asked many questions just now or have made a lot of suggestions. But up until now, I have heard, not heard any government official give an, give an answer to our questions. As government officials, you have a responsibility to maintain the freedom of speech in this society. Basic law is very clear, is that you do have to maintain the freedom of speech. If it's not done by you, who will do this? Should citizens do this? Up until now, we've asked these questions for so long and we have yet to hear an answer. You're saying that's a commercial dispute. So why are you here? Do you have a need now? To understand that, are you violating the Constitution right now? Do you need citizens to remind you through litigation? Mr. Leng Wing Chau, thank you, Madam Chair. What we discovered is that the government officials never answer the questions directly. The most easy answer is to monitor the shareholders and ensure that they solve the disputes. They don't care about DBC, but they care about ATV. Is that a double standard? The RTHK's commercial for DBC only happened very recently. So they have two channels now. One is English and one is another one. And the three other channels for RTHK for digital is completely the same. So, but DBC is not like that because they have unique shows. Further, the solving, it's very, how to solve the current issue? It's not just about commercial dispute. Mr. Chen Mu Chi. As to the actions of Mr. Gregory Soh, I feel extremely unsatisfied. So we come here from so far away, but he only came here and then left. He doesn't want to hear our voices. Especially, I feel very angry about the hunger strike that was taken by an employee of DBC earlier. He only, he only wanted to see Mr. Gregory Soh. It is a very humble wish that Mr. Gregory Soh's salary comes from us and he's a public servant. But he was so cold and did not even see him. So for this type of people, person, I would like to ask, where is responsibility? Is he fulfilling his duty? What reason does he have not to see us? So if he is not fulfilling his duty, I hope that he will resign. Lastly, I hope, sorry, your time is up. Mr. Li Wei Guan. I would like to ask Mr. Morris Ho. Now it's a money problem. Can the company issues bonds? I mean, there are a lot of audience members that are supporting of the DBC. And then it won't affect, so perhaps his shares won't affect voting rights. So then if you do make money, then you will return, give us an interest. Can that be doable? Please be quiet. According to the shareholders' agreement, all the shareholders need to agree before we issue more share, issue more shares or other injunction of capital. And some shareholders have very clearly stated that they will not buy or sell their shares and they will not allow dilution of shares. So in terms of bonds, it's something that we have discussed before, but it's something that, but it cannot be done. So thank you, all the depositions attend today. I would like to, I'd like to announce that there's a rest for an hour. Would everyone please come back to 2:10 PM? Because we do need a forum today. We hope that all the members will come back at 2:10. Thank you.